Welcome to the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Meeting of the City of Plastraville Planning Commission. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. Ready?
Let's begin.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um. Item number one. Oh, Mr. Painter, would you please call roll?
Chair List.
Here.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Here.
Member Keeney.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
Member Rains.
Uh, with a voice vote, do we have an approval of tonight's agenda for you that received one?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, pose same sign. Um. Commissioners, please consider the minutes from the December first, two thousand twenty meeting. Are there any corrections or additions that need be made? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve as published?
Motion to approve? Second.
Second. All right. Once again, on a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose none, very good. Uh, now we're gonna do the. Items of interest in public not on our agenda. At this time, members of the public may bring before the planning commission items that are not on the agenda. We ask you to. To make your comments to be held three minutes or less.
Commissioner List?
Yes.
Uh, I have a question about item number three, Marshall Way. That's also on our consent calendar for tonight's agenda. The staff recommendation is to accept and file the need assessment. Uh, do we need to take a of vote on that? Or is that just included as part of our consent, uh, we consent calendar motions?
I'd like to pull that item. Just for simply for the sake of discussion.
Okay, I was waiting for a communications with the with staff to bring that up, but I guess we can do it right now.
Okay, I, uh, maybe I'm not clear. It was under consent calendar. It's item number three under that topic. Uh, Mr. Painter, can you clarify this for us?
Uh, yeah, yes.
I mean, do we have to pull it from the consent calendar in order to discuss it?
Uh, no, since it actually technically was by member friend. Yes, staff is asking that the commission receive and file this particular request. It is a follow-up item from as a condition of approval. Uh, from approximately eight years ago. Uh, the history on this particular request, it involves some commercial coaches that are used as office space. And these are located in the north northernmost portion of the Marshall Way campus. They received a tentative, excuse me, a temporary approval back in two thousand one. And these temporary approvals last twelve months, and so. They have periodically been updated and and reviewed and continued for I for years and years. And about eight years ago, the planning commission decided to condition the request that a need assessment be provided by Marshall Hospital or Marshall Medical Center. As to the need of these commercial coaches going forward. And the conditions required specific timeframes in which these needs assessments needed to come back to you. Prior to the expiration date, the ten-year expiration date. Of the commission's action eight years ago. So the month of December was that timeframe. Staff did receive a letter from the CEO of Marshall Medical Center requesting. The additional time and need for these particular office spaces and. That information and the letter is in your packet tonight. An invitation was sent out to Siri Nelson, who is the CEO of Marshall Medical Center. I. Looking through to see if she is part of the attendee. There is somebody raising their hand. But that concludes my my report.
One clarification, are we are we holding in a a public hearing on this? Is it necess- is that necessary? Or I'm looking for direction.
Well, the condition from eight years ago required this need assessment come before you, not as a public hearing item. But the it allows Marshall Medical Center to provide evidence that they needed additional time. To substantiate the continued use of these commercial coaches.
Mr. Chairman, since I I requested this to be pulled, let me let me be really clear, so there's no lack of understanding on this. I I have no problem, uh, with receiving and filing and accepting the staff's recommendation. What I'm looking for, Andrew, is. Some sort of of rationale that we could attach to this. That is something along the lines of because of the unique and necessary services that Marshall Hospital provides to the community. That is a justification for this body to provide these kinds of extensions for the this period of time. If some other business or activity came before us and needed something similar. They could fall back on on what we've done with Marshall Hospital and say, well, you know, you you did it for them, so we need we need the same thing. And and I'm I'm looking for a way, we may not be able to do it tonight, but I'm I'm looking for a way or a rationale that we can say. Just because of we need the hospital and the services it provides, it warrants this kind of of. Exceptional extension, I guess, for lack of a better term. Does that does that make sense?
It does. However, the way this item was placed on the agenda, that type of action, if if it was the opinion of the commission. Could not occur this evening. That would have to be provided for at a public hearing, because that would be a modification of the conditions of approval.
So again, I I completely support the request. I don't, to my fellow commissioners, I don't know that it's gonna cause any harm or delay to Marshall or to anyone. If we were to do what Andrew just suggested, and I personally would just feel a little bit more comfortable. Having the the rationale that I explained as a backup, so that if we got into another situation down the road with somebody else. We would have a a rationale to distinguish one from the other, if that makes any sense. And and if my fellow commissioners are on agreement, then I would request that this item be brought back as a public hearing item, so that we could we could take up the business that way.
To to clarify, Chair List. I would add that. The ten-year window that the planning commission approved back in, well, eight years ago, December. Uh, Marshall Medical Center with this need assessment request has two remaining years on that ten-year approval. So it's not as if this temporary use permit is going to expire, you know, this month. It's it's got the equivalent of eleven months or, well, twenty-three months to go. Uh, perhaps what member friend is asking for might be more prudent as we get closer to the expiration date.
I I'm good with that. I I hope I hope what I'm trying to accomplish and the the issue I'm raising is is clear. Um, I I believe Marshall Hospital to be unique from a lot of other businesses and activities in the community. And and so I I would like to have, I would feel very comfortable, much more comfortable, having something in 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 place that clearly distinguishes that that. That's all I'm suggesting. And Andrew, if you think that, pardon me, you're really on post COVID. If you, uh, if you think that could be accomplished when we get closer to the end of the extension, I I'm good with that as well.
Mr. Friend, I I listened to what you had to say, and then I kind of glanced over the letter we received from the CEO. Siri Nielsen. And she kind of spells out in that in in there, um, the reasoning behind. Why they're continuing to use those trailers. And and I think that kind of answers, at least from from what I'm hearing from you. She kind of answers your your question. You know, here's here's the situation. We have we've added these services. We are preparing to add this. These new facilities, uh, and until those are in place, we're still gonna be in need of of these. So I I feel like she is she has answered the questions that you.
Right, so as a chairman, I I'm not suggesting that they haven't done that. My my issue is, let's say, I I I don't want to pick on any business. Let's say a a construction company with doing a big gravel pit or something. I don't know. You you pick it and. And then they say, you know, we need to have these temporary buildings, so we only give them for a short period of time. They come to us, then then they come back and they want more, and then they come back and they want more. And we say, you know, these buildings are starting to get to be not temporary, starting to get to be permanent, and so we don't think you should do it. And they say, well, you did it for Marshall Hospital. Do you follow what I'm saying? I have no question with the rationale for Marshall, and I would actually give them a. I hate to use the term different privilege, because that may not be correct, and that may cause staff some anxiety. But I I do believe that Marshall Hospital is in a slightly different category from other businesses. And so I just want to make it clear that these kinds of extensions aren't going to be automatic for any business, regardless of their rationale.
I think to be fair, uh, Michael, uh. We, as a planning commission, should impose the same requirement on that other business, whatever it is, construction, uh, you know, we don't know what it is at this time. And, uh, request that they also submit a need assessment as Marshall Hospital has. It's very clear by Siri Nelson's letter exactly why this is ongoing. And like you said, you know, they. Provide a necessary service to our community. And so to be fair to, you know, all applicants to the planning commission, I think in the. In the future, if we did grant a another, you know, ten-year, uh, tenure, was it, uh, yeah, conditional approval. One of the requirements of that would be a needs assessment by that business. Does that?
I I think they would have.
I'm trying to address your concern.
I think they would have to do that anyway, uh, Commissioner, and I I appreciate that. I I think they would have to do that anyway. Um, but if we were to deny it, and let's go back to the construction company. I hate to pick on them, but they said, well, you know, you know, we we've just got a lot of, you know. Let's say their their reasoning wasn't as tight or obvious as what's being presented here. I guess that's what I'm saying. I I'm simply calling out the hospital, to me, in my view, as as a little bit more unique and and special. And maybe this is more complicated than it needs to be. I certainly wasn't wanting to do that. It just occurred to me that. We ought to have something that kind of differentiates Marshall Hospital from 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 other. More common businesses. And and so, Mr. Chairman, I I don't want to belay the meeting for this discussion. It sounds like it can come up in the future.
Chair List, although you asked whether this was a public hearing, although technically no, uh, members of the public do have the right to comment on this item or participate. In this discussion if they wish. So before we move on to an action regarding this needs assessment. Uh, we we do want to at least offer the public an opportunity to participate.
Okay, who do we have?
So any of you who are joining by phone or by computer, if you're joining by phone, then please select star nine to indicate your desire to speak. And you'll be coupled upon using the last three digits of your phone number. If you're joining by computer, then select the raised hand option at the bottom of the screen. And then please limit your comments to three minutes. We ask that you voluntarily state your name for the record. So looking over. I see no. Persons who have raised their hand or expressed an interest to participate in this item, Chair List.
So as a chairman, I move that we accept and file the Marshall Medical Center's twenty eighteen need assessment update for team H zero one zero two to allow the continued. Temporary use of four commercial coaches on the Marshall Medical Center campus located eleven hundred Marshall Way.
Okay, I will second that. Get back to where I am here.
Simple, all in favors, certainly adequate.
All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye. Pose the same sign, passes. Okay, now we move on to.
And thank you, everyone, for for allowing me to 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 bloviate.
Now we're back to items of interest from the public that are not on the agenda. And once again, at this time, members of the public may bring before the planning commission items that are not on the agenda. We ask that your comments be held to three minutes or less. And the commission will listen, but will take no action on any of these items tonight. Do we have anybody? Mr. Painter.
Last call for a comment on this item. Chair List, I'm seeing no one raising hands or. Seeking to. Attain the floor.
Okay. Moving on. Item number four. Thirty twenty-five forty roadside plan review SPR nine eight dash zero four dash R. Mr. Painter, do you have a staff report for us?
Yes, I do. This application was filed by Rancho Convenience Center, the property owner of the commercial buildings located at thirty twenty-five forty road. Assessor parcel number three two five dash three one zero dash zero seven eight. The site contains a an existing convenience store with gas pumps, pump canopy with current Arco AM PM branding. It also has an attached fast food restaurant with drive-through with El Forastero Mexican food branding. The site contains parking, landscaping, and lighting for these uses that were approved under site plan review back in nineteen ninety-eight under SPR ninety-eight dash zero four. This site is a component of what was called the Forty Road Shopping Center that contains also the Office Max business at thirty forty-one Forty Road. In-N-Out located at thirty fifty-five. Those were approved under separate site plan reviews. And in the case of the In-N-Out business, that one also involved a conditional use permit. Tonight's request, however, involves a proposed major change to the nineteen ninety-eight approval site plan review. Proposed is a permanent screen enclosure of a portable emergency electric generator. The screen enclosure would be located at the westerly end of the existing commercial building. Like, once again, containing Arco as well as the El Forastero businesses. Its proposed location would accommodate a four-foot pedestrian sidewalk path of travel width between the enclosure and the parking area. Uh, for the site, the enclosure materials consist of would consist of galvanized metal decking panels with stucco textured finish. And color to match the base color of the convenience store and fast food restaurant. It also has an access gate, also comprised of galvanized metal decking materials, also painted to match the convenience store trim color. Enclosure wall height is ten foot, which which is adequate to screen the portable electric electric generator and the trailer it sits on. Attachment one of the staff report contains the project description, site plan, and the screen elevation details for this request and your consideration tonight. Under the city's zoning code, the planning commission is well aware of this, but the commission is granted the authority to make determinations regarding site plan reviews. Including major changes like tonight's request. Major changes are categorized under the zoning code as those that would alter the appearance, color, excuse me, character, or intent of the approved site plan. And new mechanical equipment visible from a public ways, an example of a major change. A construction permit for the proposed work may not be issued until the commission first approves the major change request. The commission must consider the design criteria within the site plan review regulations under city code ten four nine G. Applicable applicable criteria criteria for your consideration tonight was provided on page five of the staff report. And is specific to construction, such as the use of low maintenance materials that are compatible and harmonious with the site design. As well as colors, use of colors that are harmonious to the site. The proposed enclosure wall materials are metal. And include a stucco exterior finish which matches the commercial building. The enclosure gate is also metal, therefore these are very low maintenance materials. The colors, as I mentioned, were chosen to match the base and trim color of the site of the commercial building. As well as the the enclosure height, again, as I mentioned, adequately screens the the onsite commercial. Portable generator and the trailer it's mounted on. Your request, therefore, in staff's opinion, is consistent with the site plan review criteria. And that the request involves the construction of a minor accessory structure to an existing commercial facility. Is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA per section one five three one one of the CEQA guidelines. Staff recommends the commission take the actions that begin on page five that would involve entering into the staff report. Uh, into the public record, make the findings created in support of approval as specified in the site plan. And then conditionally approve SPR ninety-eight dash zero four R, subject to the seven recommended conditions of approval. Or as modified this evening by the planning commission. Chair List, that concludes my staff report, and there are representatives for this project in the audience this evening.
Okay, uh, first, any questions from commissioners? To the staff. We're rocking and rolling here. I'll open the public hearing. May we hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative?
Yes, this is Dan Goldwin. I'm under the moniker of Sharice Parker. I'm the architect for the project and here just answer questions. I don't have a formal presentation.
Okay. Back to this. Commissioners, are there anything, any questions you have of the of the applicant?
I just had one question. Um, since this is a temporary generator, would the space, should you decide down the line to do a permanent? One of like the more permanent generators, would it be conducive to that as well, the same location?
Uh, yeah, the only difference is we would just take the generator off of the trailer part and leave it there.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if it changed, if you change what you're doing with it or whatnot, that it's not going to be affected. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Off the off the cuff, I just saw that one place it was called temporary and another time it was called portable, so. That was interesting.
Yeah. It's currently portable right now.
Maybe that's what got me, yeah.
All right. Um. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this site plan review? Mr. Painter, do we have anybody? No hands up.
Seeing no hands raised at this time.
Anybody in the balcony?
Last call for public comment on item four.
Okay, moving on and close the public hearing. Is there a motion in with regards to site plan review ninety-eight dash oh four R?
And as chairman, I'm happy to move the recommendation to approve the request to revision the site plan ninety-eight oh four R. Uh, adopting the staff report as part of the public record, the findings as specified Roman numeral two. A through F and then approval Roman numeral three, conditions of approval is stated in the staff report, beginning on page six.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Farmer, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, member friend.
Aye.
Member Keeney.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Aye.
Chair List.
Aye. This and all decisions by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council within ten calendar days. We move on to the next item, which is matters from commissioners and staff. Any? Any comments, questions of the staff or vice versa?
I have a question for Andrew. This is Michael Friend. Um, so Andrew, of course, I saw the results of the appeal. On the therapy store, there was another appeal regarding the. The hangman's building, but I didn't see, it looked like it had been agendized by council, but I I didn't find any results. Has that been heard or is that still pending?
Yeah, member friend, the both appeals were heard on January eleventh at a special meeting by the council, and they did hear both appeals. The city council did deny both both appeals, upholding the commission's approval of the conditional uses. For the place of entertainment at three oh one main and the therapy stores formula business at three three nine Main Street.
Thank you. Then then just a follow-up question on the the hangman's building. The whole issue of parking is is staff going to be, again, pardon my cough, is staff going to be looking at? That just in a general sense, moving forward, not specific to the project, of course, but just. Kind of a general sense, because there was a lot of confusion or questions regarding parking.
Yeah, Director Rebus is not here this evening, but he he has mentioned to me, and I think through senior staff here at City Hall, that. There is some. Lack of institutional knowledge as has to that whole parking downtown parking district. I don't think it was even in act, it was inactive when I started working here in two thousand one. The parking garage had already been constructed, so a lot of us don't have that institutional knowledge. And so, yeah, I think that that is going to be a talking point. Uh, at least among senior staff soon, so that when subsequent projects come up in the CBD, the central business district that involve. In, you know, expanding uses or expanding footprints and things like that, that we'll have a handle on on that.
Right.
Topic.
Yeah, just to follow up one thing I found interesting in the hearing for the appeal. Is that. At the last minute, an old document was located and the result, you know, we were all trying to do back of the envelope calculations. In the moment, but it did appear that there is a slight shortage of parking spots. Uh, regarding the the building, whether it is two parcels or one, it was combined at one point, so. You know, and this was all part of the parking assessment for the parking garage. And so. I am glad to hear that this is going to be continued. Staff's going to take a closer look to see where we are, because I think. There was a general sense that, well, we we have heard complaints about parking from different individuals, from merchants, from shoppers downtown, so. Uh, one of the problems I had with it, while the. The applications of itself, the use of the building is is excellent, is fine, but the fairness to all the other. property owners and businesses downtown in, in regards to parking, that was what I was very concerned about. And as it turns out, I think we all have a common sense feel that, yeah, parking is kind of tight downtown. So I'm, you know, I'm glad we're going to take a closer look. We need to, you know, treat everyone fairly if we have more applications coming forward. But we also do need to address this so that visitors to downtown are adequately served. So it was a, it was a difficult hearing to, to kind of work through in the last minute with that document. So we'll see where this takes us in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, staff has a couple more matters. We, we have some applications. They're kind of in a holding pattern. They're not ready for prime time yet. So we will not have a regular meeting. We have no agenda items for the February 2nd, the first meeting in February. So that'll be a day off for you all.
That's, that's good, because I was a little concerned that's Groundhog's Day. Other holiday, and I don't want to get in trouble on.
Oh, boy. Yeah, where is Poxaquatomie Phil or whatever his name is? The other, the other topic item tonight would be the, the recent, this department's recent rollout of another questionnaire, also related to the housing element update. A flyer or actually the actual questionnaire went out in, into the utility bills in January, and that'll, that'll go out to approximately 3,600 bill paying folks and entities. We also sent out that same or at least a link to it, the live version or the version that you can fill in from the city's webpage. So that is functional. If it behooves the commission, we don't have a whole lot of viewing audience here tonight, but I can point out that, that it's available online at a couple of different locations on our website, through the announcements and update portion on the main page. We'll provide a link to it. We also have a link to it from a Facebook posting that occurred, I believe, two weeks ago. And also, we have, if, if you're not aware, we actually have a dedicated webpage just for the housing element and the update. So it's, it's the ability to link from there and view it, participate, submit. So that, that's all going out. The, I believe the return time is February 12th is the cutoff. I think we have just under 50 responses to this, to, to date. The other thing, late last week, the hearing in the court system regarding sourdough was heard at a superior court. Staff did see a printing of the preliminary response to, to the, to the, to the filing. It is not complete in the sense that oral argument was to occur after this printing of, of this preliminary decision. The, the court did find with the city that but it's pending any oral argument that may have occurred on Friday, which I don't have the outcome for at this time, but.
Andrew, can I, can I ask just a process question then?
Sure.
City has the, the city hears appeals and then either accepts or denies the appeal. But then someone can then litigate that beyond, they, they must have to find some other grounds for, for litigating. And is that true of pretty much any appeal that the, the city would, would grant?
Yeah, you are correct. They would have to find that a, a, we did not follow procedure, or we failed to, in their words, failed to complete an environmental analysis if that was warranted. So yes, there would be something, it would not just be the, the decision that they would appeal, it'd have to be something intrinsic with that decision that would raise it to a, a point where it could be litigated for either a judge and or jury to, to determine the outcome. Michael, I think you're, you're muted there.
Oh, in, in, in some ways, the city was deficient, in other words.
That would be a way for the court system to get involved, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
None from staff.
I hereby adjourn this regular meeting of the Pla- Plastra Ville City Council or City Planning Commission until our next meeting in February.
The 16th, I assume. Great to see everybody. Take care.
You too. Have a good one. Good night, everybody.
Night.